Thank you for joining us for our Commissioner's Status Update. It's July 9th, 2024. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Matarri, Brooks, and Duncan. Commissioner Brooks is joining us by phone. Are there changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to remove item eight because I have some additional documentation that I'd like to provide the Board for the next meeting.
Okay, but keep item nine?
Yes.
Okay. And then, public comment. Okay, hearing none. Item one, Justice Center update from Turner, Townsend, and Herry. Mr. Mendez, please.
David Mendez with Turner and Townsend and Herry. I've given you the updated budget. There are only two changes from last meeting. The item roof anchors for fall protection, I had to, they've added two structural numbers to that, and it's still being priced. I don't have final numbers, but I think it's going to come in a little bit higher than the original 25,000 or the revised 25,000 that I had told you. So I think it's probably going to be in the 30 range. The second item is, and I sent this over to your office yesterday, we have a, the change event that we talked about that's a contingency item under the design contingency. The number that we had budgeted was 20,000 for those, those two windows at the judges' chambers on the existing building. The number came in at $2,783. When we last spoke, I said I would run that past you whether you want to do that or not. And so although that's within my, the amount that I can approve-
Right.
-and sign for this, I just want to make sure that that's something you still want to go forward with.
Sure. Bill, did you follow David on those windows? So there will still be some light on the west side of the building for the existing building? And the windows need to be replaced anyway. They're, they're scheduled for updating. Bill, are you there?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my phone's acting up. Yes, I heard it. I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Bruce?
Yeah, we're basically just keeping those upper windows, right? That's in the-
They're going to be replaced with an upgraded window. So that's why there's a glass price. The original plan is to infill that entire wall. They went back through the code and determined that they wouldn't have to do fireproof windows in that area, which was a significant cost. And so they're replacing those two upper windows, so that'll still leave some daylighting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Yes.
All right, so I'll go ahead and approve that. We talked last time about that I had received a schedule from the contractor that showed a makeup plan to take care of some of the delays that they've, they've had. I had, we have a scheduling consultant within our organization. I had him review that. He confirmed what the contractor has laid out for that, that recovery plan. Schedule looks fine. Our completion date is still the same. There were some questions. I think Commissioner Duncan had raised about the move-in schedule. That's shown as the end of August, I believe.
For open to the public?
For final occupancy, open to the public.
Okay.
Is, is, were the answers I gave you satisfactory? Or are any further questions on that?
So just in my mind, we'll, we'll be able to start moving in sometime in June, and then it'll be open to the public in August?
Correct.
Okay.
We had talked about early occupancy. What's going to control that is the city, so-
Okay. Gotcha.
They'll give us a temp, our conditional-
Occupancy.
Occupancy, but our, our activities would be limited. We couldn't have people in the building.
Oh, okay.
So, so there's some, some things that can be done during that time. As far as move-in, some of the things, as long as you don't have a lot of soft things that are a fire hazard, you know, usually we can move stuff in early, but other than that, that's what the schedule looks like.
Okay.
That's all I have for an update. Right now, we still have some items that are being priced, and as soon as I get those, I'll, I'll forward them on to you.
All right. Bill, any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
All right. Bruce?
No questions. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, item two, KC North remodel with Corey, and Tom's here too, so I don't know if Tom wants to add anything either, but-
Nothing really critical to update you on. Corey Trapp, LTA Architects. Just schedule-wise, they're, they're doing sheetrock in the detective area right now. They have about another two, two and a half weeks to go on sheetrock. The electrical plumbing rough ends and the HVAC rough ends should be completed this week. And then I talked to IT with Grant this morning about getting in there in the next two, three weeks to start running some of the cabling that they need to do. We have a couple of small change orders that we're still working on pricing, a couple D ducts, and, and we have a, a water line issue that potential little change order there for some extension, a little farther, we had to go a little farther than we thought, but I'm still working with the contractor on the price on that. And then the other thing is, we have a, a pre-bid today for the re-roof project at 11:00, before it gets too hot. And the bids, the bids for that are to be turned in next, at your next meeting, which I believe is Monday at 10:00.
Oh, okay. Do Monday at 10:00. Okay. So, yeah, I will be here. I decided to just stick around, and then I'll leave after. So, yeah, we're both out next week, so there won't be any status update, so I guess that's a good thing to announce, so not everybody shows up here at 10:00. No status update, and our business meeting will be 10:00 a.m. on Monday. So, okay, thank you. Any questions on Kootenay North?
No, thank you.
All right. And update on jail pod project. Tom?
You want to hit the button?
Oh, sorry. At the last meeting, I didn't attend with Sletton. They provided a cost proposal estimate, and it's around nine million. Sletton included a few options to maybe change to lower that, but my understanding, the new facilities director was present and is going to work with Sletton on maybe getting that cost down.
Okay.
So, that's about all I have. Any questions?
So kind of still in the proposal phase? Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's some options that the jail wanted that we might end up having to take out to get that cost down. But yeah, it's, it's, I think, right now, it's estimated at nine million, 12,890.
And is that including soft costs and furniture and everything?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, is, I had spoken to Jeff, our facilities director. For those of you who don't know, we have Jeff Buller, our facilities director, and he'll be introduced again tomorrow at our elected officials meeting, which maybe that's not on your calendar, so 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. So it'd be great, but I thought that he would be a good addition to the jail pod project to help with the, especially this phase, getting that started. Is that, are you good with that?
Conceptually, yes. I, I kind of think that it's always better to get the people who are the experts with what they build in, on the beginning, in the design stage and things like that, because that's where your greatest bang for buck can be. And then as time goes by, we can, you know, migrate that over to the folks that we have internally to manage the process. I think if we can just, you know, look at it that way, I think we can save potentially a lot more money than by installing people who have a lot of experience in construction, but not necessarily in that specialized type of construction.
Right.
So that's the way I kind of see it working.
Yeah, so the experts in that are at 9.2 million.
Yeah.
So.
Well, those experts are the contractor or a buyer's rep?
Well, kind of acting, a construction manager acting as our rep.
So who's their fiduciary to?
It's to us. Yeah.
So they're going to look out for us, even though we're, they're in the business of building construction?
That's the way it was designed. So-
I mean, I'd like to at least get, you know, another opinion on that one, because I'm always leery of hiring a contractor who's going to look out for us when their profit can be enhanced by looking the other way.
So that's why I think Jeff would be a good addition to that, because he's been involved in-
Well, again, I think in the beginning, in the design phase, we can, you know, it might be prudent just to have someone look over these things who specializes in jails.
Somebody in mind?
Well, from my understanding, and we've talked about this, David Mendez's firm actually specializes in justice center buildings, right? Just jails, prisons, maybe, courthouses. Is that correct?
David Mendez with Turner and Townsend and Herry. Yes, we, we do. And I have been following through with what we talked about. I've been attending the, the meetings online. I've got their budget in, in front of me, and there's some questions that I have about some of the questions you just asked, so we'll be following up. I've got a meeting with Jeff after this, and be following up on those.
Okay.
I've got their, their cost proposal, and, and I'm looking at that as well.
Okay. And you were going to give us a cost proposal to handle that part of it?
Yeah.
Because that'll need to be included in that amount, too.
And I need to go through with Jeff what scope, I need to narrow exactly what I'm going to be doing, because like you just said, through this design process, maybe that's something I can contribute to, and, and back away as you go into construction. That's-
Yeah, I mean, the way I see it is that you're up here, and you're going to, your, your workload will be going down as ours ramps up, because once things get set in the design phase, at that point, it's just, it's basic construction, but the design is where you can, you can see things sometimes that the contractor may not. And that's what I'm looking at. I'm not looking at this being an entire project. But my experience, which seems to be different than your experience, is that I always look for an expert in a field to help me start in the beginning as far as a direction goes, because once you set that direction, it's very difficult to change it. But I know you have a very different experience with that. And one of the things that I don't understand is that now that the Justice Center seems to be working so much more smoothly since we've made these changes, why you don't see that advantage like how I do, and I think a lot of other people do?
I'm not, you're really mischaracterizing my entire-
Well, actually-
So, David was supposed to be giving us a, a proposal, so that's what I was waiting for, so I didn't know he was still going to all the meetings and, and all that, because we hadn't heard from him. So this is our first jail update. So I'm totally fine with that. I don't have a problem with that, and I think that Jeff can add things too in the design-
I think absolutely, you know, but I think it would serve the Sheriff's Office better for us to have people who have dealt with a lot of different jails, are more familiar with the, the update or the latest in standards and things like that, and have them look over the shoulder of our contractor, because, you know, while we'd like to think that they're going to operate with absolute benevolence and always looking out for us, I don't see how you can try to maximize your profit and also be a fiduciary to the client.
And thus, Mr. Mendez?
So, then we're in agreement.
Okay.
So, please accept my apology if it came across as mischaracterizing.
Bill, do you have any questions on the jail prod project?
I really don't, except I was interested in what kinds of items have caused the price to increase a little bit. We have examples of those, or?
It's in the proposal. One thing that, the last project that we did down there, the last expansion that hit pretty hard was the impact fees and the permits. And again, we're looking over $400,000 just in permits and impact fees with the city.
Yeah, and the impact fees actually, you know, increased with the city. So that's something that we have no control over, but yet we are subject to, so, yeah. All right, well, I look forward to the next report. Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Item four, rescission of lot consolidation agreement discussion. Mr. Tarbutton, please.
Commissioners, I'll start off while Ben's coming up. If you look to the screen on your left, you can see the lot that we're considering. It's 1410, where the cursor is. You can also see that this property line's been eliminated. There's still a faint blue line there, because this lot was consolidated. It's just like the one above it and below it, with two lots, eight years ago it was consolidated. At that time, the planner handling the case was Mel Palmer. I'm confident that Mel handled it properly. But now, the owner would like to split these back up again, and that's the reason I brought it before you. And Ben can go into details if we need to, but the short version of this is that the code does not allow me to say they can split this back up, because what the code requires is that it must go through, in this case, a minor subdivision. But a minor subdivision would not fix this problem, because the minimum lot size in this agricultural suburban district is two acres, and these parcels are two tenths of an acre. So you can't get there from here, under the code. My thought is, if you guys are comfortable with this, you can authorize them to be split back up again. I just don't want to do this with impunity and imperiously on my part.
Is this the same owner?
Yes.
So the owner eight years ago said, "I want to do this." Now the owner eight years later says, "I want to split it."
Yes, ma'am. And in deference to the owner, and this is the sort of thing that planners are very familiar with, no one else on the planet is.
Okay.
Is there a tax advantage to, to this?
Yeah, there would be. I mean, essentially, they had consolidated two lots. There's one building site, it's assessed a certain way. Now they will have two building sites, and it'll be assessed differently.
Yeah, so that's really what it comes down to, is normally it's a C bono, who benefits? And we just have to look at this as, are we going to allow people to consolidate and then subdivide based upon their taxes? And I would argue that if you get the economic benefit for that, then there is a process for, you know, undoing that economic benefit, and it's in the, the code. And if the code doesn't allow for it, then I'm not quite sure why we should be making all these exceptions.
I understand and agree. I think the one nuance I'd like to add, and Ben can further, because he's been more in the weeds than I have, excuse me, is that the, the owner alleges that he didn't hear the full explanation of this when the lot consolidation was done. So in his mind, he wasn't aware that it could not be undone.
But there's language out there that would explain this in our code manual, right? Or?
For anyone that read it.
Okay.
And I will say, let me get out of here and show you something that was on the actual form that the owner signed.
So if I don't read that there is a site disturbance, and I get a bulldozer and start moving a whole bunch of dirt, does that mean I'm exempt? Because it wasn't made clear to me?
Point made and well-taken. If you look to the left of the screen, it's also literally on the consolidation form that Mr. Strickland signed. But again, in deference to Mr. Strickland, this doesn't say, it doesn't go so far as to say that in this case, it's not possible to do a minor subdivision.
But things can change at any point in time after you do these consolidations, so there's no guarantees that if you can do it on one day, something's not going to change later, which will preclude you from doing it later.
That's true.
But it sounds like the taxes, at least the property taxes, would go up, because you would have two buildable sites.
Correct.
So it doesn't seem like a tax advantage unless he's just going to sell the second parcel.
Well, I suppose the advantage would be-
Except that for the last eight years, it's been lower tax.
Yeah, lower tax last eight years, sure. But I'm saying going forward, what's the, what's the purpose of the subdivision?
Well, it, it's not that it would, in fact, it would benefit the county to have two building sites. The problem is, is that now, are we going to go into this world where people see this opportunity, "Well, let me consolidate my lots until I'm ready to start selling them so I can avoid this process." And, you know, if anything, there should be some, you know, expense incurred for this. It may not be the normal subdivision process, but, you know, there's certainly an expense that we're all incurring by doing these things. So I don't know if that's being charged or considered.
Well, the problem is that we don't have a process to do what he is asking to do, unless the commission, commissioners were willing to essentially just rescind this and make it non-existent. And that's the only option that we have, because we just do not have code that would allow for this division to reoccur. I think what he's, like, as Commissioner, Director Callahan said, he's looking at this statement here and said, "Well, if the county knew that this was never going to be a possibility for me to re-subdivide this in the future, it should not have had this statement in the form that said it's, it's possible." And we, of course, as, you know, as you see at the end of the sentence, says "as appropriate." Well, we have to make sure that everything fits into this form, and some of them don't.
Is there a hardship? Is this being done because of a hardship?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Well, this certainly flies in the face of the concept of self-sufficiency and being responsible for our own behavior and all those kinds of things, which are consistent with the culture of this community. I think that you should update your language. I probably would say that anything can change in the future, so whatever stated today can change, that you're aware of that. And I think that, you know, we can have further discussions. This is just a discussion item.
Yeah, I think what would be probably appropriate, if you are interested in making the exception here, is that we could, specifically with the Bonanza Ranch area, which this parcel's in, this does not happen in area, in other parts of the county, because we're not having the same density in the agricultural suburban zone. And so if it were in another zone, like restricted residential, where they are smaller lots, they continue to remain smaller lots, the subdivision process is still available to them. Because we had the minimum lot size change in '05 for the agricultural suburban zone, this is kind of stuck in, in a no man's land. And so if there were the potential for people to combine properties in the agricultural suburban zone, in Bonanza Ranch specifically, that we could maybe make a clause to add to this, saying, "Look, this isn't going to be possible to re-subdivide in the future, so we need to make sure that you're, you know, understanding that moving forward."
We could certainly do that, and I can also add that it's really rare for people to come back to us and ask to unconsolidate. To my memory, it's only happened one other time in the 10 and a half years I've been You want to stew on it and come back?
Yeah, I think so. So if you want to put it on for the next-
Sure.
-thing, I think so.
Thanks for listening.
Yeah.
These are the tough ones that, it gets personal in the office, and the owners are upset, and you can imagine.
Yeah. Okay, Bill, any questions on that? We'll think about it and-
No, I, I would like to come back to it, though. It concerns me that we, we end up in a situation like this and spending money doing this. I mean, look at all the money they've already done this, with the staff time. And I know it's not likely to happen over and over again, but we should have some catch-all phrase that at least allows us to recoup what we spend on, on a consideration like this.
Okay. Bruce, anything else?
I'm fine talking about it in the future. You know, I just, I think that we just want to be careful that we don't open the door. I mean, the problem with being up here is that we're constantly presented with exceptions, and, you know, and at some point, what's the point of having policy? What's the point of having code and those things? And-
But I would argue that Boise makes a lot of laws that don't fit Kootenay County, and so they do the same thing. It's like, hey, one size fits all. We're humans, and one size doesn't fit all. So to me, I think, you know, exceptions are based on, you know, one-offs that, that happen, and you said this is the second one in 10 years. So, yeah, no, I, I get it, but I think, I mean, people are people, and not everybody's lives follow the same path, so.
Well, I would agree if that there was something, a hardship or something like that. But what this really did was it cut the valuation, which affects taxes. And so it really is a purely economic motive, is what it comes across as, unless there's additional information that could be provided that says, "Hey, you know, this was, this was done because I had to. I was compelled to."
Yeah, would the owner be willing to make a statement for us?
Yeah, I'd follow up them and ask them.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, because that's kind of what I would need to know more, like, what is the hardship that we're trying to solve right now?
We'll talk with them and get that to you by email before your next discussion.
Okay. So I think that's July 25th, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then item five, newly approved community development ordinance conflicts.
Commissioners, I wanted to visit with you about this one, since I wasn't here on June 27th, when you approved both the family division and the change to 10 acres in the rural zone in the reservation. I wanted to make sure you realize that, since you've approved both of those, that in the reservation, those two things work at cross purposes. Meaning, in the rural zone in the, in the reservation now, and in the agricultural zone in the reservation, you can still do five-acre lots, you just have to do it through a family division.
So I asked Pat, and Pat said the overlay stays. So the reservation overlay stays, and we cannot go below the 10-acre minimum. I asked Pat that specifically, on the record.
Yeah, so this, this would be for the rural zone, right? So what happens is now that the family division exemption allows-
Also applies to the ags.
Allows the five-acre divisions in the agricultural zone.
That was supposed to be subservient to the, the zoning as well, that it was an opportunity for people to subdivide, but within the zone. The zone was the prevailing, that's the way I understood it.
Yes.
And then the 10-acre minimum, the temporary one, that would prevail, that the family subdivision was below. It, it was-
True, but that's only for the rural zoning, not for the agricultural zone. So there, that is only applying to the rural zone, whereas there is agricultural zone in the tribe's reservation. The family division exemption applies to both the reservation and the agricultural zone.
It was supposed to be-
So you can create five-acre parcels in the ag zone, where you can only create 10-acre parcels in the rural zone.
I don't think that was our intent.
That was not our intent. Our intent was to have zoning be primary.
Yeah. And so, well, okay, so hold on, there's a little nuance here. Agricultural zone, five acres is the minimum. You just have to go through-
Family division.
Well-
No, it's 20, I thought.
It, it is 20, because we, we don't allow subdivisions under 20 acres in the ag, but the minimum lot size per code is five acres. So I see how the family split could do that, but we, our intent was not in the reservation. So if, if it's an ag piece of property, they can go to two tenths on 20-acre ag.
Yeah, so, so what I think would make the most sense is to look into some kind of an emergency ordinance to apply the 10-acre minimum in the tribe's reservation, to apply not only to rural zone, but to ag zone as well.
So, so this sounds ambiguous.
Okay.
At the moment, it's not paragon of clarity.
Right. Well, we asked that specifically, Pat answered specifically, so our intent as a board was 10 acres on the reservation, whether it's ag or rural.
Okay.
Okay, that's good to know.
I thought that was-
We'll get back with Pat and make sure- Okay. That's good to know. We'll get back with Pat and make sure, if there needs to be any, adjusting to the language or amendment.
It, it sounds like that the rural was brought forward to us in the ordinance and not ag and rural for the 10 acre minimum.
But I, I was under, um, the impression that this was gonna be subservient to the zoning. So the zoning was primary. And if the zoning did not allow for a certain amount of subdivision or a minimum lot size, then that is in essence what it would be. Now, I'm not familiar with the five acre size on a agricultural-
I think what's confusing you is you, it's always hard to remember that this is by definition not a subdivision.
Correct, it's an exemption.
And so the family exemption is different from what's in the rural zoning district or the ag zoning district.
Well, the-
It's an exemption by definition.
Right. Well, our, the board's intent was 10 acre minimum on the reservation, whether you're ag or rural. And so the family split would allow a 20 acre parcel to be split into two tens.
We'll get back with Pat and see if we, my guess is we either need to change the language of the code or bring it to you as an emergency amendment.
Okay.
But we'll do, we'll do whatever needs to be done and get back to you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
And don't be absent next time these things happen.
I took the luxury of a family reunion. It was amazing.
Good for you.
All right, county booth at the state fair. So Bruce, this is on-
Yeah, um, this was kind of brought to our attention, and, um, I think there were other departments who were interested in kind of manning a booth at the fair, if I remember correctly. And, um, I always see these as opportunities to get feedback from the community. And, um, I wouldn't mind, uh, having a booth at the fair, uh, so that way we could try to get more feedback from the community. And I also would like to see if there's not a way where people could put, uh, suggestions into a box and the board would have the benefit of reading these, um, to get feedback.
So devil's in the details, 10 day fair, 10 hours a day. Are we paying people to be there? Um, do, are we manning it? How many people? One, two, three have to be there each day? So there's a lot of, of different issues. And I, I remember when we had one in the fair a few years ago, did not work well because people signed up for shifts and didn't show up. And, uh, I also don't know if we paid people or they had to come on their time off. They had to take vacation, so I can't remember that. Or we said, you can only serve for four hours during the whole 10 day fair on county time.
Yeah. Well, you know, that brings up a good point. You know, I, I think conceptually, we just have to say, okay, does it make sense? And how much will we be willing to spend for such an endeavor? And then does it, you know, does the value of the feedback in talking with people exceed that cost? Um, you know, we just, I, I think engagement with the community is always a good thing. And yes, it does cost money. Um, I certainly don't think it should be manned by, um, you know, not more than two, but, you know, maybe just one person. And, uh, and to have them there, you know, certainly when it is gonna be busier, which is typically afternoon through a good portion of the evening and time on the weekends. But if it's something that the board is open to, then we can put together those details and see if it makes sense. Maybe it won't pencil out. Maybe it will.
Then the other thing you have is some elected officials would be happy for their people to go on time, and other elected officials will be against it. So that's when we're figuring all that into connection. Now, I understand that elections is having a booth there, which is appropriate. We have a huge presidential election coming up. They will be working, trying to get, um, people signed up to be poll workers and all that. Um, I would be, you know, happy to have a suggestion box there if that's, you know, one of the main, uh-
Well, if, if that's the case, then you can certainly have a separate table which has other county functions there, and people can show up and not have to be there the entire time. But for some people, they can show up and spend time speaking with people. You know, so it doesn't have to be an all or nothing. If elections is there, maybe there's enough room that we could have for one table at the end, which just has maybe community development or some other, you know, the assessor's office. I mean, people, I think sometimes would like to hear how things work. I mean, you and I, we sit in a lot of meetings. Bill, Bill's in, you know, a lot of meetings. People don't really see how it works. I mean, we just finished Board of Equalization, you know? Some of that stuff, I think, is very interesting.
Yep. Yeah, if you wanna put a proposal together, that's fine. Those are just some of the details that, um, are more challenging because you have different thoughts on how do we staff it.
Yeah, well, those are good points. And I think if the board is agreeable to it, then, uh, I'll talk with, uh, elections and see what kind of space they might be able to give up for the county. And, um, David, did you wanna participate in that a little bit? Your department?
We've showed up at the pass. Part of what we've done to offset things is we tended to send our exempt employees. So it wasn't a money issue.
Yeah. So maybe we could at least come up with some basic schedule and see who might wanna fill it. And if we can make it, uh, net neutral, uh, from a budget perspective, then it should work out.
A fair's coming up soon, so you wanna address this again in two weeks?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, Bill, any questions or thoughts on that?
Well, I, I think the sooner that we can, we can do it, the better. It occurs to me that a couple times over the years that I've been on the committee, this kind of question or suggestion comes up, and it's generally within a week or two of the fair, and that's just not enough time to really, uh, put it together. Uh, I, I, I tend to try to go to the fair and, um, talk with people. And I know that's not perfect, but neither is a suggestion box. And I get a lot of feedback, uh, from people at the fair, and I think that's important. So, uh, to the commissioners, don't be shy and, uh, get over there and, and mingle a little bit. But, um, like I say, I, I, I agree with, uh, both Leslie and Bruce, but, but I think we should, uh, make sure that we don't, I mean, the devil is in the details, but sometimes it's a little late, uh, to work out all those details when we come up with the idea, which seems to happen almost every year. So there are my imperfect hot thoughts.
Yeah, to that point, Bill, I think it was, some people are a little bit traumatized from last time, so nobody brought it up again until new people came and said, hey, we might wanna do that. So, thank you though. All right, we'll, we'll discuss it again when we have more details. So, thank you. All right, item seven, levying for judgments against the county. Ms. Lynch, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alicia Lynch, Tax Accountant with the Auditor's Office for the record. The county has received six court orders to refund utility companies named in lawsuits against the State Tax Commission regarding operating property and one entity against Cootney County. The Auditor's Office is looking for direction from the board on how you would like to move forward. Your options are as follows. We can short pay ourselves in 2023 taxes. We can levy the full amount this year as a judgment levy, or we can levy a portion in tax year '24 and a portion in tax year '25 as judgment levies. Because these are court ordered refunds, they were paid promptly so they would not incur additional penalties and interest. The refunds total $344,690, with $86,626 being the county's portion. These refunds were paid in tax year 2023 for prior year taxes, 2020 through 2022. These orders affect not just the county specifically, but many of the levying districts within our county. Whatever decisions you make will only affect the county's ability to levy for judgments. The individual taxing districts will also have this opportunity. There is a mechanism provided by Idaho Code 63-1305 to recapture these mandated refunds. A judgment levy is outside of the normal budget process. It is not voter approved and is solely at the board's discretion. This levy has no limits and does not affect maximum allowable increases. The board has two years to recapture these funds, then the window is closed. I must advise the board that there are rumblings of more court orders coming our way. To give the board an idea of what this would look like to the taxpayer using last year's values, we calculate that the $86,000 is about 20 cents per 100,000. The judgment levy would be itemized on the taxpayer's bill as a separate levy labeled with the statute. All of the judgments would be combined together, so the county would have one additional judgment levy. But if multiple districts opt to use this mechanism, a taxpayer could have several judgment levies on their tax bill. So again, the Auditor's Office is looking for direction from the board on how you would like to move forward. We can take the hit and short pay ourselves $86,626 in 2023's taxes. We can levy the full amount in tax year '24 as a judgment levy, or we can levy a portion in tax year '24 and the remainder in tax year '25.
Okay, and what's the deadline to make this decision?
Well, we have to have our public, our budget published before August, so we would need to know that beforehand. And our levies are due at the beginning of September. So I would say you have the month of July to make that decision.
So essentially, July 22nd is our last, I think, our last scheduled, um, meeting, uh, budget meeting. So, okay. Thoughts on that, Bruce?
So I just wanna, I just wanna make sure I'm, uh, clear on this. This is, uh, the expense of recovering money through judgments. Is that correct?
Right, we had to already pay them, so this would be paying ourselves back for money that we weren't expecting. This was not budgeted, and we are allowed in code to recoup that.
Yes, okay. And so right now, the taxpayer is already kind of paying for it indirectly.
Right, it was taken out of funds that were taxed for this year but not for that purpose.
Yeah. So, and so this just basically allows the county to levy specifically just for that one expense. And it does not affect the balance of the levying capability.
Right. It is not part of your overall levy or affects your 3%. It will not be added to your budget next year. It's completely separate.
It's in addition, okay.
So, it's a portion that we levied for last year or the year before, depending on the tax year of the, the, of the, for the judgment. I know it's confusing, but regardless, so let's just say it was '22. It, we levied for that amount in '22. We collected it from the taxpayers, and we dispersed it, or, you know, it came to us. Now we have to pay it back. So we will never, so realistically, if you look at '22's levy amount, let's just say we levied 50 million, we technically will never collect that full 50 million because of that 86,000. So what it does is it gives us an opportunity to recoup that amount that we levied for in a prior year without affecting, um, our, you know, maximum for the next, whatever, years.
Sure.
So we're, it's an opportunity for us to recoup an amount that we levied for in a prior year that we had to, to pay back. Does that make sense?
Mostly. But we can talk about it. But we have, we have this month to make our final decision.
Yeah, so I think July 22nd, if we can be prepared, July 22nd, to give a hard yes or no.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Thank you.
But the three options make sense?
Yes, yeah. Um, Bill, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I, from what I've heard, I'm, I understand, but I, I think we should split it up into a, what is it, '24, '25, uh, situation, where it doesn't all come due in one year.
Okay, so that'd be 10 cents per 100,000? Okay.
And we definitely can do that, just if we receive more judgments next year, we would again have the two years, so we would be adding to what we already have.
Right, gotcha.
Potentially.
Okay, thank you. And then is that, um, your narrative? Is that something you can submit to us? Thank you. All right, item nine, Transit Department Organizational Chart. We are, um, not doing item eight. So, Bruce?
Well, I thought, um, since last week you'd mentioned that you were okay with the chart, it probably would be good to have you start and talk about why. And this is news to me, why we're expanding the department, uh, by upwards of going from five people to seven people. Why we need to do that, why we need to increase our overhead, and why we're expanding a department that is, uh, not exactly a state mandated service.
So, uh, a couple different reasons. Um, during the reorganization last year, we didn't know what we were gonna end up with, um, until everything, kind of the dust settled and found out where we needed to be. And Chad will be able to speak a little bit more to this. So, uh, what was unknown at that time was FTA's, uh, requirement of having a director type position. And if we call it something else, then we have thousands of pages to change in the policies, um, that FTA requires us to have. And so we're not going from five to seven. Uh, it's kind of been six, and it's gonna stay at six. There is a vacant frozen position, um, that we don't have any, and, and Chad can speak to this too. There is no plan to unfreeze that position. It has not been budgeted for in the past. So, um, this is what is needed. I've spent hours and hours in that department. I spent hours at the triennial review, and this is kind of what is needed to do the, workload. And I think that's what, Chad, if you wanna speak to what you've handed the board.
Well, real quick, so you are familiar with the expansion. You've spent a lot of time at these meetings, so you were aware that this was an expansion of the department?
So I don't, I don't consider it an expansion. I don't, because the director in place before had a dual role. They were essentially over two departments, like Parks and Waterways has a, a triple role, 'cause they're over Noxious Weeds, uh, Snowgroomer, and Parks and Waterways.
So, the, okay, so you're saying that it is a six-person department because we have this vacant position, or it's a six-person department because we're adding a director? And we're going from five, which is the original chart, that's five people?
Where did that original chart come from? 'Cause I, I don't think that was, um, that wasn't from Transit, is that?
I think that was, uh, created internally in the B O C C to, uh, kind of visualize what we have at Transit. And then this one was discovered just by accident. I'd never seen it. It was never presented to me. Um, Chad, did you build this?
I did, correct.
And when did you build this?
Uh, that was presented to HR on March 19th.
Okay, so, um, what date did you build this org chart?
Uh, it probably would have been several days before that.
Before the 19th?
Correct.
So how come on the request for job evaluation, it says organizational chart attached, and you did not include it with this form?
Uh, so I didn't have it finalized at that point.
But you said you just finished it right before the 19th?
I was working on it, yes.
Okay, and how come the board-
I submitted it on the 19th to HR.
But this is, this is dated and signed on the 19th. So why not just include it with the form?
Uh, just at the way that we had to get things done in the transition, that's just the way that it worked out. But it was presented to HR per the policy of 600.
Yeah, it just seems like, you know, that if we're gonna get people, commissioners, and I, I know if I get asked to sign a form, that if there's an org chart that's created the same exact day as I'm being asked to sign a form, I would certainly want that form, that org chart, to be, uh, presented to me because it seems to be relevant information. Uh, if you have five people in the department, HR's telling me you need seven people to be in the department. Commissioner Duncan, just one second. Commissioner Duncan just said six. So now the question is, is it five? Is it six? Or is it seven?
So for point of clarification, when the Resource Management Office was in existence, there was the director, the senior program manager, there was a program manager, a grants manager, a grants technician, there was an administrative assistant, transit specialist, another transit specialist for fixed route, and then the fleet maintenance manager, with the transportation maintenance operator too being a vacant position. So when the department was split, and then we went, we still had our senior program manager position, which had been by board decision changed into a contractor position. So that individual was moved in as a contractor, but the position was still frozen and budgeted at 50%. And so that was still in there. And then we still had the position of maintenance operator in there as vacant. So we have not- So we have not added to the org chart. This is just when the division happened under board direction. This is kind of just what the pieces fell, and what we needed to be able to complete the work. So this is just a designation of what the department now needs moving from the Resource Management Office into the Transit Department. So we're not adding any positions, there hasn't been anything added in the department. There, we still are under the operation of, we don't know who is doing what in some instances, because we don't, still, we don't have a finance manager or senior program manager, whatever the title is there. We have individuals taking on that role, but they're still under a different role, under a different department. So the transition still has not happened there.
See, what confuses me is last week when I spoke with our H R director, I said, is this a brand-new position that we're creating and about to make a decision on? And the answer I got was yes. So if it's a brand-new position, then how can it be an existing position according to you?
So if you want to be technical, the whole department would be a brand-new department, and all positions would be a brand-new position.
Well, you see, that would be fine if we had budgeted for these positions, we weren't creating, we weren't expanding the budget and those kinds of things. But last year, we actually got rid of the director position.
So the budget has not increased, it's actually decreased. So I'm not sure exactly what you're speaking to in that regard.
It's decreased because we've gotten rid of some positions, but this is a brand-new position. Because I presume that you're in the program manager position, and so we have to fill this position, and, and right now, this position, this position, and this position are currently being occupied.
Correct.
But this position's been vacant for how long?
At least three years.
Three years. And that this position is actually being held by a ten ninety-nine person, a contractor.
It kind of is because that contract has been reduced, so it's still not to its full capacity being held. So currently, it's being held by a contractor and the grant manager that's now under the auditor department. It has a percentage, yep.
Okay. So we couldn't just take this position and move it down under here on the org chart, and then have this position manage those four people?
So you're saying to get rid of the maintenance operator position?
Well, if it's been vacant for three years, why do we have it?
It's still something that, when we initially went to the county to have groundskeeping at our facility, they said that it was too much for them to take on, and it was a position that was needed to have a full-time groundskeeper position at.
Okay, so it's been vacant for three years, has anyone been putting in overtime at all to cover for these positions?
So our transit specialist right now for the fixed route is covering those duties.
Okay, but my question was, is he putting in overtime to cover for those duties?
So the, they are non-exempt employees, so no. But the duties that then fall to me, yes.
So you're putting in more than forty hours a week?
That is correct.
Okay. And you turn in a timesheet, I'm just curious?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I have always, per policy, turned in a timesheet.
Okay.
And then we also keep record on a separate system called Toggle. So we have a way of keeping track of that for grant purposes.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Yeah, and when did we do the transit, excuse me, when did we do our transit workshop?
That was April sixteenth.
I don't remember seeing this during that workshop, was that included?
That was not in the transit workshop.
Why not?
Well, I asked you on March nineteenth if you would like a copy of it, and I got no response for that.
But why wasn't it included in the, why are you asking me individually? Why don't you just include it in the workshop? I mean, it is a part of the transit program. It illustrates what it's supposed to be.
Okay, well, then that would just be an oversight on our part that we didn't. But we did ask for all commissioners to provide information that they would like to see in the workshop. And then after the workshop, we also asked if there was anything that needed to be added or changed.
Yeah.
So that way, we could cover everything that the commissioners were looking for.
Yeah, the problem with that is that I have to know what to ask you. So you have the information, and I have to know to ask you for an org chart because I don't know you have one.
So on March nineteenth, I did ask if you wanted a copy of the org chart.
Uh-huh.
So I'm, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess my only issue is the fact that I don't quite understand why we need to keep this position if it's been vacant for three years. And I'm trying to understand why we want to add another layer of management for two people for an additional three people.
So when the board decided to take away ARMO, and they transitioned into the auditors, that did not take away any of the tasks and responsibilities needed for the Transit Department. So that director position is still required and necessary. So whether you call it a director or anything else, it is still a necessary head of the department. And it is something that has to be in place in order, because otherwise, who's making the decisions at that point, and who's taking the responsibility for it?
So what will this org chart look like with six people? If we're going to go to six, because I keep getting seven put in front of me. So if it's six people, what will the org chart look like? Is it going to be like the org chart that I was presenting once before, where we had director, manager, 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 employee? Or is it going to be a person in charge, and then they have upwards of three, four, or five people that report to them?
This is the org chart that we are proposing to move forward with. I mean, ultimately, it is the board decision on what happens with this. But in order to do the work that needs to be done, to fulfill the regulations that have to be fulfilled, this is what needs to be in order to make that happen.
So it can't be flatter, it has to be three layers?
I guess I'm not understanding why it would need to be flatter, because in order to
I'm asking you, does it?
Delegate the duties as needed. This is kind of the organization that you would need in order to really fulfill each of those positions.
Well, the way this is set up, the finance manager and the program manager are both in charge of the transit specialist, the fleet manager, maintenance manager, the transit specialist fixed.
Correct, in different regards. Because you have one who's overseeing all the finances, and one who's overseeing all the operations. So it, it's just like the Board of County Commissioners oversees different departments. And each of those departments then have different layers. So it's the different layers that we need in order to fulfill the regulations.
Well, you know, it seems very foreign to me to have one person manage two people to manage three people. So it seems like we don't need to have it set up that way as far as what need people, I mean, they're not managing these people, they're asking for information so they can do their job, is that correct?
They, well, I mean, they are in essence managing because they have to be the ones who oversee the operations or the finance. So they have to then make the decisions that guide the people below them in order to then run operations correctly.
So they technically have two bosses?
Well, that's.
So I think maybe that, hold on, let me just interject here for one second. So if you look at it purely from a who hires, fires, can write somebody up, maybe that's where we can make some different lines, if that makes sense. Because if the, and it's not called finance manager, but essentially, because I don't know the new name of it, potentially, if that finance manager position wouldn't be writing up those other people, then we would get rid of that line, if that makes sense, if that would be the program managers.
So there, the person who would take over when the director is out would be the, that position.
Right.
So if something was to happen, and the director is not there for whatever reason, then somebody's got to take on that role and responsibility.
Well, it just seems like it should be a much flatter org chart. That's the first thing, because, you know, and again, this is just one of those things that I've seen, you know, the short time I've been here, that, you know, you know, I'm now above this person, so that means my job is more important, we pay more.
We have many departments throughout the county who have situations like this. So if we're going to look, start looking at it differently, that's fine. We can get org charge for all the departments and, and look at it that way.
Well, typically, when somebody reports to somebody, that's who they call when they go, I'm not going to show up to work today, I'm sick. Now, here, the transit specialist fixed would be calling both the program manager and the finance manager. And then my question would be, well, what happens if the program manager says, I need you to come in, and the finance manager says, don't worry about it? I mean, that's the way this looks like, right? So there needs to be a hierarchy of who's managing who, would you agree?
I would.
Okay, so that's why I say this thing is very confusing. And that's the part that I don't quite understand, is that, you know, when you write up these descriptions, and then you look at them, and you say, well, this program manager is over these other three people, and the finance manager is over these other three people, that is how we end up getting higher-paying positions.
Well, I think in general, in the past, it has been more like duties. It has not been a hierarchy of who manages who. It's been more of a duties, a duties organizational chart. So that's why we can have this conversation, and I'm, I'm happy if you want to meet with Chad and, and, you know, ask those questions to try to get these lines lined up better.
Well, I think that they need to be more clearly delineated. I see everyone's either a specialist or a manager, even at the bottom level.
Yeah, but the, again, the titles do not affect the pay for the job descriptions.
Okay, so that is absolutely a hundred percent. The titles will not affect the pay, are you sure of that?
You can ask Sylvia, but that's what.
Sylvia Proud for the record, so when we do a job evaluation, reclassification, we look at the job description, not the individuals. And we look at their responsibilities, their know-how, what they have to have to do the job, their accountability, and how they're structured in terms of, are they managing people or not managing people? So we try and set the titles aside and really look at the content of the job description to determine the grade.
So title affects salary zero percent?
Correct, and even when you do a salary survey, you do not look at the titles, you look at the, they're, you're provided with a benchmark summary of the duties, and you use that to match. Up to anywhere between eighty to eighty-five percent of a match to get, say it's a good, it is a match. You benchmark the job.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that titles do not affect salary.
It shouldn't.
Shouldn't or does not?
Does not. We do not look at titles.
But they don't affect salary in your system?
No, they don't.
I could, I could have the same job, and it could be a specialist, a manager, a director, a vice president, and the salary will remain the same?
Yes, it should, because we're looking at the job description.
Okay. Well, I think it should be, you know, much flatter, unless there is some sort of information that you want to show me from another department, you know, FTA that says it has to be this way. I'm certainly open to looking at that. But I think it should be, you know, a, a person in charge, and then the people report to that person. It's a small department.
All the market research that we have done have shown exactly what we have done here as well.
And who's we?
For myself and H R.
Okay.
Yeah. So it was throughout the state of Idaho, we looked at all the different transit agencies, and they reflect a very similar org chart.
Yeah, but they also have very different responsibilities. I mean, you know, we're looking at six full-time for Cootney County Transit. Mountain Rides has thirty-five full-time and fifteen part-time. Pocatella has nineteen full-time and forty part-time. Valley Regional has forty-eight full-time. And I can tell you, having managed a lot of people, especially if you're involved in operations, that is a lot of work, that is a lot of work. You are constantly recruiting, constantly interviewing, constantly disciplining, have to manage an operation when someone shows up late, when someone doesn't show up, I need you to come in and fill for that person. That's how that works. So I don't see how it's a good apples-to-apples comparison in that sense.
There's a distinct difference in that we contract as our services, they have it all in-house.
Yes, so.
So we still have the oversight, we still have the operations that go hand-in-hand with that.
So how many?
But it's a distinct difference in that we don't directly employ those individuals.
That is exactly right, and that is my point. How many advertisements have you run to hire for bus drivers?
We don't run the advertisements, but we do work with our contractors to get those.
I'm sorry, Chad, I'm talking, but if you want to go ahead and speak over me, go ahead.
You asked me a question, so I was answering.
And how many interviews have you done for bus drivers?
We've actually been in on many interviews for bus drivers.
Okay, so you don't run the ads, but you're in on the interviews. And then what happens when someone calls in sick? Do you, or is it your responsibility or the contractor's responsibility to find a replacement for that day?
So the contractor has the responsibility to find a new driver.
Okay, so those are huge differences. And listen, I have contractors in my business. I love working with contractors, because their job is to make me happy. When I have to hire employees, it's very different, because I have to follow all these additional rules. I have to make sure that people are there, and so the workload is dramatically different. And so you're really actually making my point, and I appreciate that. But I still think that it's different, and so I am more of the opinion that this needs to be a much flatter org chart than what it is. It's not really been presented, but been discovered by myself. But Commissioner Duncan and Commissioner Brooks signed this form. So Commissioner Duncan is okay with a six-person, the way I understand it, not a seven-person. So I don't know if that would affect your calculations, Sylvia.
It will not, because the duties haven't really changed.
Okay, and then the only other thing is where Commissioner Brooks stands on this.
Well, not philosophically, from before I was elected, I'm opposed to the county being in this business, this free bus business. And it's a good example of when you stick your toe in the regulatory mess that is Washington, D.C., what you have to do to comply. And I'm sorry, I don't buy that it doesn't cost us anything. I think the average taxpayer, and I include myself in Cootney County, would, would be at least mystified, if not outraged, about how many people are paying to do what kind of work. I just, this is not something that is required by the state, it's not a mandate. We do have some, and, and some of them are going wanting, in my opinion. So I'm opposed to transit, period.
Okay, so I do have, there is a solution to, if you would like a desk audit, there is a company in Spokane who can come in and evaluate all the job duties and evaluate how many people would be needed to fulfill those job duties, if that's what the board would like. I can bring back a proposal.
You know, I, I don't really see us having a need for trying to establish probably more positions. If you think they're going to go in and find more efficient ways to have less positions, I would be open to that. But at this point, I'm not for an org chart like this. I think it's too vertical and not enough horizontal for six people. I'm sorry, I just, I don't see how that is necessary. And I'm a little disappointed at the fact that, you know, these decisions to be made on positions were really, by default, force us into have to agreeing with this. It should, the process, I believe, was done backwards. This was an oversight by yourself, this was an oversight by you, and the.
I wouldn't necessarily claim it an oversight purp- Per policy, the policy was completely followed. Per policy, it's not put forward when we do the reclassifications or other positions that the org chart is included in the board packet. But that is an easy, simple change that we can make and make sure that it is included in the packet. I personally have probably asked for half a dozen org charts since I've been here, just out of my curiosity, and I'll be asking for a lot more.
Yeah, well, you know, I understand. And I think part of the problem, again, is that, you know, as a commissioner, I get asked to cast votes on these little trees that get presented to us. And I think that that is part of the operating platform for a lot of people inside this organization. And it needs to be the board starting with the vision of what we want departments to look like, what we want them to do. The way it was characterized to me was that, you know, Transit has no plans to grow, and no growth should mean, you know, a very small, very lean operation. And if that's the case, I don't understand why we need three layers within a six-person department.
And I would argue that this is lean, that it is a lean department for the amount of work that we do have to do.
Well, I don't, I'm not arguing over that. I'm arguing over the layers of management that if you get rid of the management responsibility, then you get to free up time for people to actually do their jobs and leave the management to the one manager that should be in the department.
All right, and you agree that we should treat all departments countywide the same?
I think that we should be looking at having as flat of an organization as we possibly can. I think that we should try to find high-productive people and that we have a lot of open positions, and we need to start asking ourselves, why are we maintaining these open positions if we're either not going to fill them or can't fill them? Those are serious questions because we have them. And in fact, I think we have more positions in our county than Canyon County has, which is a shocker because Canyon County has a lot more people. And that's one of the things we want to work on in different departments is establishing metrics and trying to identify places where we can find efficiency with people so they can be more productive. And we don't have to add more staff in the county because anecdotally, we're hearing, I'm overwhelmed. We should be able to drive these decisions with metrics, not, you know, anecdotal stories of, you know, we're drowning in a sea of work and we need more people. It's just not a good way to oversee an organization. And I think that it would end up working out much better for the managers too when they could start to understand what's going on in their departments. And it works out better for the public even when they start to understand the challenges we have inside county government. And that's the feedback I've been getting from the growth dashboard. People are stunned at the metrics that we have established so far with the different departments. So those are my thoughts on the org chart.
All right. Bill, anything further before I call for public comment?
From day one, I, Transit Center is a very good-looking building, and the buses are very good-looking buses. And if people pay attention, they are largely empty, and they're driving around, but at most, at most, a half a dozen people in them. The only one that seems to be really used is the one that goes to the casino. And I don't think that's the county's job to ferry people back and forth to the casino. So I'm sorry, I think if the average person in Cootney County listened or saw what went on today and the discussions about what's required by regulation, they would be outraged. And I'm opposed to anything transit-related.
Can I make a point of clarification?
Yeah.
Okay. So the link route is run by the Coeur d'Alene Casino only. We have no, we have no tie as far as funding or anything of that nature. So that is just the Coeur d'Alene Casino that runs that, and they connect to the Riverstone Transit Center to take people to the casino. And so that's not something that the taxpayers have any affiliation with at all. And.
Okay, I understand, but that's not the visual. When people see the bus loading up with people and heading down the road to the casino, you know, there's one impression, the county's paying for it. And if the county's not paying for it, it should be made clear. And I've tried from the day I got here to find out what it costs per passenger or per mile or per ride, and I've been short-circuited at every turn trying to get that information.
So that is information that we do have and we have provided?
Not to me, you haven't.
Well, I think that you will get that shortly.
Yeah, and by the way, did you ever find out from F T A. about the Cootney Health match dollars?
I have emailed them, and then I just rang them the other day, but I have not gotten an answer. But it is still something that I am definitely pursuing.
Thank you.
You bet.
Public comment, 1116, meeting adjourned.